Hallway meeting order. Be resolved that the agenda for the May 3rd, 2019 meeting be accepted as presented. Mr. Kirby, Mr. McDonald, Secretary, Mr. McGregor, all in favor. Okay. Class two then.
Okay, this morning we do have a delegation. Mr. Kirby and Andy is in attendance. Would you like to come forward and address council?
Mr. Chair, morning council.
Morning.
What is the price for taxation for Waloneesa? My figure is one hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars. That's how much Oakland taxes will subsidize Waloneesa in 2019 unless council ends the taxation imbalance that started with the 2015 inauguration. Prior to this presentation, I've provided council a number of charts. Chart one shows Oakland paying eighty-six percent of at-large taxes compared to Waloneesa despite rural residents making up only sixty-five percent of the municipality's population as demonstrated in chart one B. So as council knows, at-large taxes are paying for services shared by rural and village residents, including fire protection, municipal staff, and council expenses. Oakland pays eighty-six percent towards those costs compared to Waloneesa's contribution, including the renovation for both Waloneesa board councillors and the current head of council who is out of Waloneesa. So what are the imbalances? Council funds shared services through at-large taxation, which is based upon property values. With only sixty-five percent of the population, Oakland has eighty-six percent of the assessed property used to determine taxes. Waloneesa with thirty-five percent of the population holds only fourteen percent of that property. Now, each year this imbalance is amplified because council classifies more services as shared, which forces Oakland to pay a higher and higher percentage of the municipality's operating expenses, as you can see in chart two. Interestingly, in the first year of inauguration, 2015, at-large spending was only about a quarter million dollars. In the last four years, as you can see, it's pushed around a million dollars or some cases exceeding a billion dollars, and it's become our largest single source of revenue in municipality. While both Oakland and Waloneesa enjoy one-hundred percent benefits from the shared services, and that in and of itself is a debatable point because of the proximity that some rural residents have to the service center. However, rural residents are paying disproportionately more for the benefits that are kind of from that large taxation. So what is the answer? Stop using property taxes for at-large taxation. A council has a number of tools at its disposal, which we can speak about later, and these tools can more fairly reline taxation with the population. As an example, let's talk about at-large spending in 2019 for government services, protective services, and health services. It's projected to be six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. So this includes shared services like the salary for municipal staff, running the offices, paying council, fire services, grants to cemeteries, and operating management. As in previous years, because of the property valuation split, rural will pay eighty-six percent and the villages fourteen percent through at-large taxation. And that's broken down in chart two A. Instead, if council were to look at population, for instance, as the yardstick instead of property values for at-large taxation, we have a shift of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-two dollars. That would shift from Oakland to Waloneesa taxpayers, as you can see in chart two B. Now Waloneesa obviously may not appreciate more taxes, but with Oakland residents talking openly at this point about dissolving the amount they're admitting is happening, the price could be significantly higher for a fair tax illusion is not found. So if this one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-two dollars is redistributed as proposed, mill rates for both Oakland and Waloneesa would return to really much the same levels as in 2014, which was the last year before inauguration, if you care of the numbers here reflected in charts two A and three B. So in conclusion, the price of a fair tax solution, in my estimation, is one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-two dollars. But beyond the money, beyond the need for a fair taxation model, this is about respect. It's about respecting Oakland residents now and into the future. Since inauguration, concerns brought to this council by rural residents and their elected representatives have been summarily dismissed. Since inauguration, taxes paid by Oakland residents have increased nearly forty percent while taxes paid by villagers through Waloneesa and at-large Waloneesa have dropped more than twenty percent. This financial disrespect will increase if council adopts a single or a harmonized mill rate, as advocated by Waloneesa councillors since inauguration and more recently by the current head of council. Harmonized rate would further shift disproportionate taxes onto rural taxpayers. Now, for example, if we had moved to a harmonized mill rate in 2019, we would have had to raise about one-twenty million in taxes to fund municipal needs. Harmonized rate would have been set approximately ten point eight, uh, ten point eight. Differential taxes as proposed in the last copy of the draft budget that I saw would have Oakland and at-large at ten point one-four and Waloneesa at eleven point four-two-three. So it's not much of a split anymore. If we move back to 2015, if we had adopted a harmonized tax rate in 2015, we would have had to raise one point four million in taxes. A harmonized rate would have been eleven point five. Differential mills in 2015, as set by council, were Oakland, a little over ten, and Waloneesa at eighteen and so on. So how does council manage to narrow that very wide gap in mill rates in 2015 and now? The answer is simply Oakland property values increased by more than thirty-eight million dollars, or thirty-six percent between 2015 and 2019. That's more than the total proportion assessed value of all property in Waloneesa. So council can raise one-hundred thousand dollars in taxes by raising the rural mill by point six-nine. By contrast, Waloneesa's mill would have to jump four point three-nine to bring in, let's say, one-hundred thousand dollars. So clearly, council has been using Oakland's airways of cash power for municipal spending since inauguration. Small increases in the rural mill rates bring substantial dollars, which have been used to offset drops in Waloneesa taxes. The council must recognize and accept that the current system is not fair, and any move to a harmonized mill rate will only punish Oakland residents even more. Taxes on rural homes are higher than the same price property now in Toronto and Melbourne. Clearly, we need a fair tax solution to restore balance and respect. Once council admits the current system is flawed, council can use a number of options to fix the problems, including special levies, local proven taxes, or converting Waloneesa into a local urban district and taxing the LUD and rural groups accordingly. Market value can either be determined through land sales or even derived from the production on farm properties, if you want to put it that way. So all residents want to believe council is acting in their best interests. It's now up to council to fix the taxing balance and demonstrate through their action that council does respect and does fairly represent all residents. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before I call for questions from here, you make a note in your submission that all taxes in the rural have gone up forty percent. Is that correct?
I said the taxes that have been recovered by council from Oakland have increased about forty percent since inauguration.
I have asked Keith Murray, who's a rural resident in the northern quadrant of the municipality right off the Sinebo River, if I could use his tax tape for, as an example. Could you say the taxes went up substantially in Oakland? No, you're splitting the bond Oakland and Waloneesa. We are Oakland-Waloneesa one. We're not two municipalities. So in 2013, Mr. Murray paid three thousand one hundred and nine dollars in total taxation between school and municipality. 2019, proposed budget, he will pay two thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars less. So where's your forty percent coming in?
Well, Mr. Chair, I don't think it's silly to argue the numbers that have been coming out of this council and administration since inauguration. It's pretty simple to look back and say, and see the numbers. This is how much taxes have been taken from Oakland. This is how much taxes have been taken from Waloneesa.
Yes, and we've recognized or disforced the taxation on farmers. Our farming sector is what's paying the increased taxes amount, and we are trying to deal with that on an individual basis as much as possible, but the government has a twenty-six percent proportionate on the farm land, which is substantially going, in fact, it doubled since 2015. So we are looking at that element and trying to deal with that on its own. Not all taxation has gone up forty percent in the rural. To say that is incorrect. It's not.
And I haven't said that. I said simply that the taxes taken by the municipality from Oakland have increased about forty percent since inauguration.
You say Oakland. It's not Oakland. It's from the farming sector. Because your taxes have also gone down last year.
And how many farms are already within Waloneesa, sir?
Well, okay. We can split it out however you want. As I say, we're one municipality, which we got different sectors. We've got a pipeline. What are the pipeline, which is a class fifty-one, which has fifty-five million dollars in assessment? What are their services? Can you tell me?
Sir, I didn't come, Mr. Chair, you come here to debate nuances of the overall budget, but what I'm saying is, rather than getting stuck in the terminology, rather than getting out of the weeds on this particular section or that particular section, what I'm simply saying is that there's been a taxation imbalance. And it's come since inauguration. And if you are saying that that is not true, then I think that you and I have fundamentally this agreement on the facts on paper of the last five votes.
But you come in with a global feeling that Oakland has been subsidizing Waloneesa, and that's not truthful, is it, Mr. Kirby?
Oakland taxes have increased almost forty percent since inauguration.
Oakland taxes? You're saying all Oakland taxes?
Waloneesa's taxes have decreased more than twenty percent since inauguration.
You're saying all Oakland taxes increased by forty percent? I just showed you that it's not the case. It is the farming sector. The pipeline, services for the pipeline basically are fire service. They held exercises in Waloneesa, basically inviting all municipalities wanting to come and see, including First Nations, and had our fire department participate in those exercises. That's the service they need. That's actually, all their money should be going to the fire service. But it's not. As a council, we have a duty to make sure we service all the municipality. We give everybody the opportunity of the service they need, and we collect the money in taxation, which is done through the rules within the municipality.
Mr. Chair, if I go to service to the theater with my friend Steve, I pay five dollars, my friend pays five dollars to see a movie. That's the price of the service. Respectfully, if I go to service to the theater with the head of council, Mr. Breckovich expects me to pay eight dollars and sixty cents. Mr. Breckovich pays a dollar forty. That's fine, I go to service with Mr. Breckovich to see a movie. He expects me to pay eighty-sixty, and he pays a dollar forty. And on and on. Mr. Head of council, I would put to you, how often am I going to keep wanting to go to the theater with Mr. Breckovich?
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question?
Sure.
You'll love that, because I think that's a great example. So, you know, you said that we shouldn't get in the weeds on this discussion, and that's I think the issue with us as a municipality is that enough people aren't getting in the weeds. This is not a simple issue. This is not something you can say, oh, here's the best, and it's a magical solution. If you are not getting in the weeds, you are not understanding what's going on, and not enough people are learning that. So I commend you. You are willing to put your name forward to sit at the table. I think that's fantastic. I hope that you come with an open mind, and I hope you come ready to learn, because I think it's a fair statement as a new council of ours, council, that we have learned an incredible amount in the last six months. There is stuff that I never imagined that happens, and that we have to follow it. So anyways, I want to start off by saying good on you. You gave the example of the movie theater. So talk to me about what these changes would mean that you're proposing for the average tax.
Again, I appreciate your role. Your role is to guide this council. You have to appreciate my role, because again, and I'm not trying to beg off on an answer to your question, but I have no purpose anything I say with this. You, council and staff have been working, I would say, seriously, almost filed, allegedly filed, probably since the election in October. For a couple of weeks, I have been sitting at my house, totally mumbled. So no, I do not have the capacity to go one-on-one with you on every single line by line of the item. However, I'm sorry, your question directly is?
What is the impact on the average tax here, the changes that you're proposing?
I do not know. All I know is when I look at the numbers in the broad score, to me, this one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-two seems to be the imbalance that goes back.
Okay. So I completely recognize that, you know, you have not, you shouldn't be expected to put in the amount of time that it would take to, um, answer my question. So completely fair that you don't have an answer to that question. And you're also the only one that's here willing to speak. So unfortunately, you know, we're going to ask you a lot of questions, and you might be getting questions based on stuff that isn't even your issue, right?
That's right.
So there's a lot of stuff that is out there, and it's really time for some of this stuff to come light. So we take these concerns seriously. You know, when you bring stuff forward, we spend time on it. We put out a response to it. I've done the calculations of what you're proposing. Okay? So I got an assessed value for a quarter section of land of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, which I think is on the limit of probably the land of municipality, higher. But I wanted to make sure we were getting something that was appropriately fit. So that works out to a portion assessment of one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand. The same portion assessment for a home would be a home worth two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. Okay? So we're talking about an acreage worth two-sixty, or a home in Waloneesa worth two-sixty, or a quarter section of four-hundred. So if we did what you're asking, on a min cost, a person in Waloneesa would pay eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars for administration. A person in Oakland would pay two-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. Your example of the movie theater, I think, is a perfect one, because what you're asking is for that Waloneesa resident to pay four times as much for a min as an Oakland resident. And that isn't what feels fair to me. Right now, based on that portion assessment, an Oakland resident and a Waloneesa resident pay three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents for administration. So a quarter section pays three-hundred-and-sixty-three bucks. That feels fair to me, two people paying the same amount for the same service. We don't, we don't implement people taxes. We implement property taxes. That is the system. And, you know, part of your presentation, you talked about wanting to tax based on population. So per capita tax is based on what you're suggesting.
And I know that, Mr. Chair, I know that council does not have the abilities to, and I appreciate that. But again, council does have other measures which could, in some ways, reflect or mirror operation percentages within rural and urban.
So, and again, on the surface, that sounds great, right? You know, that sounds straightforward and makes sense, but when you actually dig into it, you start to think about things like, there's lots of people that own the property here that don't live here. So does that mean that we don't tax them? They don't pay anything? Right? Forgive me for using this example. You own land in Waloneesa in the rural. Should she, should she only take tax in Waloneesa?
Again, a lot of taxes are on the way around. There's, I was saying, there's several to this.
But council, everyone wants to split on, on population, right? So I'm just trying to demonstrate that population doesn't make sense. There's tons of examples. The pipeline is another example. There is no population that's attached to that. The businesses, there is no population that is attached to that. We, we implement property taxes, no legal taxes.
Well, Mr. Chair, respectfully, the council has decided that property taxes are a method that they want to use since inauguration and certainly before that. What I'm simply saying today, I think you, this is no surprise, the council, especially who have been here since inauguration, that rural residents are unhappy with the current model.
One of the other things you mentioned was a head of council position. Do you believe a head of council position should be paid by people for where they live? If it's an Oakland person, they should be paid for that head of council position? Is it wrong, Mr. Chair?
It's, Mr. Chair, it's just an example of the current situation.
Okay? If it's okay, I'll just keep going. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I have some questions, but you might answer some.
What is your tax change because of the inauguration?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I believe my taxes have probably gone up about forty percent. If I, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I can't remember the numbers. I don't, I don't think this is a personal discussion, but certainly, Mr. Chair raised the citizens' taxes. You want to bring them to the table? I have brought mine to the table, so my personal, I can lead the press. I'd say probably around forty percent.
Do you think you have a personal point to bring? Do you think that I'm sitting here just dragging my own personal attitude?
Well, I don't believe the council is there for the right reasons, which is why I have to, the whole municipality, which is why I'm appealing to your accessibility.
Thank you. Because I'm not sure that everybody believes that or thinks that, and let me tell you, I would not be sitting at this table trying to save the amount of tax that my taxes are going out on this table. And I don't have that number either, so it's fair you didn't count your number, but it's not worth me sitting here and going through what we go through. You talked about respect. Respect is a two-way street, and, and you have been very respectful. I'm not saying this is you, but there is a tremendous number of people that think it's okay to try to destroy a person over this, to destroy your reputation, to destroy businesses in our municipality. I don't think that's okay. And I think it's time for residents to start standing up and saying, this is not right. This is not how we have this discussion. This is not how we treat people. So I appreciate that you have been respectful with everything you brought to this council. So again, this is more a comment for the larger conversation. So, and I've taken enough time, so.
No, I, I can say that my property tax last year, I, I own ten acres, and then we have the farm. It stayed basically nil. I put an addition on, so it went up, but that's, but like, my farm taxes, like, we paid an extra, extra thirty thousand dollars here, just in this municipality alone. Like, don't think I'm, and, and I'm the same as Brett. Everybody's harping on us. Like, don't think that I don't understand this. You know? And everyone, you know, and people are complaining about recreation, and people are complaining about, so as, as everything sits right now, on the assessment that Brett has of the two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, each person pays one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for fire. So if your wife or I, and I may, I'm not sure if you have kids or not, and they're going down the highway, and they get in a rollover, is it, is it okay that with your proposal that Waloneesa pays four-point-seven-three percent more, or ti- four-point-seven-three?
Mill.
No, not mill. Time, sorry.
More time.
More than you or I would for the same thing? I personally don't think that's fair. That's not fair. Yes, they may have a little bit of an advantage over fire, but absolutely not in, in, in rescue and stuff, absolutely not. If I got a guy pinned under, pinned under a piece of machinery or stuck in a bin, why should, why should, why should I pay way less than, than someone else just because of where they live or where it is? And, and that's the art, that's what I'm having real trouble with. Yes, the garbage, and I brought that forward. Mr. Rome tried to, but it was, no one else would, no one wanted to put it all on Waloneesa because other people, and I sat here and we negotiated in a meeting that we're going to pay twenty percent this year. But people are out there saying that I'm not doing a good job. Like, I really don't think, I think I'm doing a very good job here. But you have to take your numbers, and you have, you have to look at it, and is it fair? Because we're all one. We're not two. Plain and simple.
I have another example here. This is just something going back to the garbage situation. We have a couple of retired farmers in the village, Gene Corey and Keith Elder, and basically going on their, their value of property. And according to Mr., and we'll go back to Mr. Murray, who's in the rural. So Gene Corey this year for garbage, with the change we've done and proposed in the budget, if that gets passed, his garbage cost this year, he's a single man living in the village and a retired farmer, is three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars for garbage this year. Mr. Murray out in the, in the northern sector is going to pay one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. So, you know, two and a half times less than what, going to the same station as one person compared to a family. Keith Elder, who's another retired farmer, he's going to pay three-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars this year for garbage, and Mr. Murray's going to pay one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. There was a, a rent or sale property on, on three-forty highway just north of Waloneesa in the rural advertised at one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. It is a fourteen-hundred square foot house, seven acres of land, and one of their advertisements was on, had to do with the taxes. Their total tax bill, property and school, was eleven hundred dollars. That is nine hundred dollars of municipal taxes and two hundred dollars worth of school taxes. That's what their advertisement, because it's such low taxes, eleven hundred dollars. So that, and then taking that into the garbage account, they'll pay fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents for a family of four garbage this year.
And I, sorry, Mr. Chair, and I have a problem with the garbage is, farmland pays forty-eight percent of the tax bill in the, in the RM here, and my quarter, a quarter section of my land is almost next to nothing for garbage. And I've been, and, and so if we want to say we're subsidizing Waloneesa, we're, my farm, our farm has been subsidizing every small holdings here garbage too. I'm fine with paying it on, on my, on my farmyard or whatever, but like, is that fair? That's not fair to me. But I'm not out here cutting everyone down and saying everything is wrong. You know what? That's the way it is. But I'm on here to change that, because I don't like it.
Mr. Chair.
And sorry, I'm not picking on you, Kirby. It's just, there's stuff that has to get out, and you're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Any of the owners?
We're trying. We're tr- I, I brought forward, why don't we put a, a special levy on garbage to try to make it more fair? But we can't do it this year. I would love to look at possibly doing rec districts, because I'm not just a hundred percent sure where you live, but I'm pretty sure you don't use any Waloneesa's recreation, so why should you pay for it? I would love to draw a map on, and then, and then we can special levy that, but we can't do that this year because it took too long. I would love to start the 2020 budget process in about two months, because we have to get some things done. We get it, but we just, you can't come in in a council in the first five months and just change the world. We can't. And there's, there's rules that I understand, and that I've been told that we can't do things. And it's out in the public that, yes, well, we can do this, and we can do that. You can't. And the biggest thing I take from joining council is what the province puts on us. I just, I never dreamed it, how much regulations there is and what we can and can't do. And it's the biggest learning curve I've had since college, bar- it's the biggest learning curve I've had since college, bar none. Bar none.
There's a method and a process that's involved with that, and it all takes time. And unfortunately, we can't fix it, like Brett was saying, we can't fix it in the first term. It's, it's something that's going to be a gradual process that we can work together as a common goal, and it's, as far as who's doing what to who, Mr. Harvards and myself are both in the rural, so we're not doing it to the rural people, we're, we're in it as well, so we're not trying to, to put the focus on farmers and make them pay a larger portion. Our taxes went up as well. Ours went up, we only have six quarters, it went up two thousand dollars from last year. So yes, it does happen, sorry, last year, the year before, um, it does happen, and, uh, and I'm sorry for the increases that are happening, but we are trying to work together to make it work. And as Mr. Harvards said, there's rules and regulations that the government imposes that we had no idea that these things can't be done, or it takes a longer process to get this, this set up, to get the ball rolling in the right direction. So it's not that we're digging our heels in and, and we're procrastinating. It, it, it's unbelievable the amount of time that, that has to be set aside, and these things have to be started, as Mr. Harvards said, now, so that we can get the process going again, to make more changes for the next term.
Mr. Chair, and also, uh, one thing that, that, uh, I think needs to be, i- i- this is to do with, uh, village taxation. The special levies are, are paid for this year, which, you know, in two thousand eighteen, which was, that, that makes a huge difference to the taxes in Waloneesa, which was, that was one that, that was on there, and it's, that, that is done now, so, except for our lagoon, so that is one that, you know, and that makes up part of the difference too. And a lot of people don't realize that, but the special levies are, are done.
So, oh, sorry, sorry, Bob, no, I cut you off, sorry. So, I, I've sat at this table for six months, or whatever it's been. Um, we've increased spending this year. I, I wanted to bring in an extra fifty thousand dollars towards gravel and roads, and we've done it. We've paid extra seven thousand dollars in, uh, handy van, whether we like it or not. We've put twenty-five thousand dollars into recreation, twenty thousand of that that I sat here and fought at this table for, we tossed twenty thousand dollars to Waloneesa and took on five here, we've given extra thousand dollars to each hall, and your taxes are going down two-and-a-half percent, and we're going to get more services.
Mr. Chair, and I think that Council Harvards, since you pointed the table, which I'm so happy to get back to my original point, a lot of the rural taxes have been rising since amalgamation. Rural residents, largely do not see any precipitable changes in the services they have received. That is a problem, that's a political problem, because when you charge people more money for the same service, you usually get some sort of blowback on it. At the same time, Waloneesa's comparable taxes are dropping.
Uh, I'll, I'll bring this, one, one of the biggest things that, that changes in the taxation from amalgamation came over because of the fire service. The fire service at, at, at the point of amalgamation was basically paid for by Waloneesa residents. This became a service for the whole municipality because Oakland didn't have a fire service before, they relied on their neighbors. Uh, in fact, they never even had a formal agreement with Waloneesa, which was actually required under the Act, and they didn't do it. In any case, it doesn't matter, we're one now. In this, uh, letter that we have sent with names on it, says that rural pays higher insurance premiums and receives much less desirable service from the fire service. Can you explain what that means? Is that your people that put that up?
My people.
Well, your rural people that you, you've, uh, established their names on these sheets here, did you sign the sheet?
It's my name on it.
I haven't looked at the sheet. No? Okay, so this, I'll just go through that. Last week, uh, I believe last Wednesday, we could go Wednesday, there's winds gusting to approximately seventy knots per hour. Uh, there was a grass fire on the Hipwell Farm. The Hipwell Farm is in the northern sector, close to the edge of the boundary. Uh, the fire call came in, because the Hipwells decided that this was out of hand, we've got to do something. So they put in nine-one-one call. Within seven minutes, trucks were headed out of town. The trucks were forwarded. Trucks loaded with water, loaded with fuel, going at a high speed of, high rate of speed to get to this fire. Seven minutes it took them to get out of town. They put the fire out, thank goodness, nothing was harmed at all, and they got back to town within a couple hours. Do you think there's any increased costs as far as fuel goes? Or let's go back to the water? Where did the water come from to fight the fire? Where did the water come to clean up the trucks after they got back? It came from the hydrants. That's the hydrant rental, that's what it's there for. So, that in itself, you say that there's less desirable service for fire? I have a real problem. Anybody says that in rural, because they're, they're as fast as anything.
Mr. Chair, again, nobody's going to stand in the way of providing proper funding for life-saving services. However, you can argue the fact that, uh, Mr. McGrave's house in Waloneesa is on fire. There's a much higher likelihood that the fire department will get there faster than if the fire department from Waloneesa has to respond to a house fire on my property. As a matter of fact, Waloneesa's not even the first responder for my property. So again, what we have unfortunately, through the amalgamation process, is the disparaging of services. Waloneesa has, has a village, it's a municipality, it was easy to operate. Everybody within the boundaries was paying, the services were obvious, the services were readily accessible. Now we have services, in many cases based in Waloneesa, that are trying to cover evidence of value that's falls for, you know, a long ways west, and it's not always an equitable situation.
Okay, I'll bring up another one there. Um, early March, there was a snowmobile accident in a farmer's field, a very severe accident. The, uh, nine-one-one call comes in, within six minutes, there are units going home, fourteen personnel from the fire department. They get there in a very short period of time, you realize it's in the mid, middle of farmer's field, the ambulance can't get there. But they have the equipment and the expertise to get in there and get them quickly, and one of the paramedics that was there advised me, told me himself, when they got there, they did not think they could save his life, that's how bad it was. They got him into the ambulance, they got him to Brandon, the four stars got to Brandon. He was taken by Star, and Brandon's going to pay. That man's still alive. He's a rural resident, it didn't matter, could have been anybody from Timbuktu, they would have done the same thing. And that's a service that we have to pay for, and if you don't, as a rural person, understand that, we have an agreement with Brandon Fire Service to come to get to your place first, but they're released as soon as our guys get there. What does that do? It's a twenty-thousand-dollar cost agreement. Who's paying it, all of us, the whole municipality, not just the rural, all of us. You have a response?
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, I was just going to say that if you're talking about the responses that our first responders happened into traffic, motor vehicle accidents, for instance, we know that there's some cost to cover in that, because that's manually by the province. So NBI does take back money every time our people roll up to one of those accidents. I'm not saying, it's not about, in that case, it's not about money per se, it's about the allocation of the services.
It's about saving lives, Kirby, it's about saving lives and property.
As I said, I'm not, I'm not getting in the way of money saving lives, I'm simply saying that it's an allocation of services, so we have services that are based in Waloneesa that really, in many cases, me and my family, they're, they're not really going to respond if I have a fire, or if I have a, a rollover on my road as I head toward Number Ten Highway. They're not the first responders in Waloneesa.
Do they respond at any one?
Sure they do, but, oh, okay.
First response and, and does not mean that they don't respond in any way, okay?
The chair has been, you know, bringing it's at this point. Oh, really, sure, it's my neighbor. My neighbor's had an unfortunate run of fires on his property, most recent one, whereas this shed, you know? I'm his neighbor. I stood there and watched Brandon Fire Department deal with a fire for ninety minutes, and Waloneesa didn't, relieved them. That's the service officials. I'm not saying Waloneesa doesn't do a good job, I'm not saying the service is not exemplary. I'm simply saying that services are based in Waloneesa, so for some of the municipality, Waloneesa's services, I hate to say it, are almost a nonfire, because we are served in many cases by services from other jurisdictions, and you know this to be true, people are accessing recreation facilities outside of the municipality. First responders for fire are coming from outside the municipality to service a portion of the population, so it's not...
Do you, uh, do you pay school taxes?
I'm sorry?
You pay school taxes?
Yes.
Do you have any kids in school?
Well, university.
In school here?
In university.
In school division, in the school division?
Not.
You don't have any kids in school here? What do you pay them?
Of course I pay them.
And you haven't got a problem with that?
Well, it's a discussion that's, you understand.
Okay, but I, I guess that's what I'm saying, is that taxation is done on property, as property taxes are done in that fashion, we have to abide by the municipal act, we've done that, we want to get everything done as part of the good spot, we have a service, services that we want to put to people, it is going to the whole municipality, the whole municipality should be paying for, and that's my philosophy, and at this table, we want to build bridges, we don't want to build walls, you want to build walls, we don't want the walls, we want bridges.
Uh, I'd just like to make a couple comments, Mr. Chairman, if I can. Uh, first one is ninety minutes for Waloneesa fire to show up at your neighbor's home. I, I, I've no factor, it would never take them that long, and our, our fire department is the India of most municipalities, uh, volunteer fire departments, so I think that one you should look at the number. Uh, where you choose to live, uh, you know there was no fire department locally, so that you must take into consideration where you live. Uh, the second one, there's ninety percent of calls for the fire department is in rural, whether it be a traffic accident or a fire, and so ninety percent of them are in rural, and that money that is paid back by NBI goes into general, uh, it goes into our general, uh, municipal account, it does not go back to fire department, just so you know that. So that's just a couple things I want to clarify, thank you.
Okay. Couple things on this, and not that you didn't do this, Kirby, but, um, on the...
Please, Glenn.
Oh, sorry, 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 I'm, sorry, I'm, Glenn, sorry, sorry, I have a friend, Kirby, it's sorry. Um, Glenn, um, on the fire, on the hydrants and the retainers, so if you take eighty-six percent, we're paying like twenty-two-hundred and some dollars for the, for the fire hydrants, I get that, it's not fair. But then you take fourteen percent of twenty thousand dollars, it actually works out that Waloneesa's paid eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars more for those two, on the share of those two things than Oakland is. And that's one of the biggest things I hear, but if you get down to the numbers, Waloneesa's actually subsidizing our, if you, if you look at it that way, subsidizing our retainers on the fourteen percent, eighty-six percent.
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you, um, I, I would say I would encourage you by some of that for, so I appreciate, uh, all of your, your channeling and all this. I think so, I'll leave you with one last thing. Um, you may not agree with my numbers, you may not agree with my position, but that doesn't make a call.
No, it doesn't.
And I, I throw it back to, to council as a whole, to, uh, to continue the work that has been suggested, that has started, towards some sort of more fair tax solution in our municipality, because I believe it's incumbent on council, this council especially, because after forty years, it seems to be that, um, we're reaching a point where, uh, people's appetite for the same old is just not there anymore, and that worries ages residents of the municipality.
I think you told me that two thousand sixteen, Kirby, you questioned whether I'd be re-elected, but it takes forever.
Um, Mr. Kirby, again, I appreciate you coming, and the way that these meetings work, this is our only opportunity to address some of this stuff, so I have to, you know, send a petition, so I just want you to understand that this is our opportunity to talk to some of these savings, so I apologize, it's something to say to our stuff that we brought forth, but the fire, um, you know, it's really, you know, that example you gave of the Brandon Fire Department responding, and then Waloneesa arriving, Waloneesa arriving, the number of dollars that saves our municipality when Waloneesa arrives and is able to send Brandon home is just, it's incredible, like, the, the cost, when you look at the, the cost is amazing what is charged and what we're able to save, so I think that needs to get taken into it. Um, you know, a very high percentage of these responses are emergency services, very normal fire responses, very emergency services. You were absolutely correct, when it's a traffic accident, NBI reimburses us those costs, but that doesn't pay to have a fire department there, right? You still have to pay to have a fire department there, so absolutely, there's some costs we have to pay, but I don't know that everybody, you know, connects the dots and say, well, we still have to pay to have a fire department there.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one last thing, you know, we've talked about fire a lot, and I, I hate to, first, I'm going to the table, and I'm a hundred percent prepared to back up, but I think if you look back, you will find that before amalgamation, when there's more informal working relationship between a rural municipality and a municipality in Waloneesa, Waloneesa's fire services, but Oakland contributed, I believe, at least a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which I, I think was half of the value of a new vehicle probably a compere unit. And that was not, not, not much more of an amalgamation, so probably in nearly twenty ten's. So, again, again, nobody wants to save starved life-saving services, nobody wants to save them. I gotta get back to my premise, people just want to know that they're receiving fair value for the money that they're paying for taxes, and I think, and you, council, council, a council must understand, must realize that rural residents do not feel they're getting fair value for their taxation dollar.
So, I'll, I'll go, that, I want to just, one...
Sorry, Brett, I think we can just finish, yeah? Yeah, sorry, I, I wasn't totally done, just totally okay, um, and because that was the next thing that I was about to say, is I, I think it's really important that we don't lose sight of that, that Oakland did contribute to that fire truck, that's, that's absolutely acknowledged, it's just, you know, the, there's no retainee paid in those years from nineteen ninety-one to amalgamation, so, and again, that was an agreement, that was based on the purchase of another car truck, but I think that's lost sight of a little bit in this discussion too, is that rural residents weren't paying a retainee for service during that time period, and so, yes, taxes have increased for rural residents for fire service, but was it completely right that they weren't paying for some of that before? Was it completely right that there was no retainee in place before? That doesn't feel completely right to me. Um, and then again, just, I feel like we've lost perspective sometimes, so, um, I want to correct one of Brett's numbers. Uh, Brett told us, uh, the number for fire, and you were basing it on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar portion assessment, which is numbers that we have used in the past, so there's a lot of numbers, it gets confusing, but the example that I gave in that quarter section was four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, or the home worth two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, fire service is currently, uh, eighty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. So I feel like sometimes we're losing sight, uh, I get that thirty dollars matters, but eighty-six dollars for fire service, to have a top-of-the-line, uh, emergency services response, if you happen to be driving down Number Two Highway and have an accident, I think that that's worthwhile, and, and I know that you're not saying defund it, but again, there's some things that we need to deal with. The petition, you do not do the petition, but do you know that no one has asked me to sit down and have a discussion about any of this? Do you know that I have asked people who are organizing the petition, not all, but certain people, to sit down and have a discussion, and they refused? We've, we've lost the conversation. People think that you can have this conversation on Facebook, you can't have this conversation on Facebook, you need to sit down, face-to-face, and have a discussion, or have a phone call, and, I don't know, is that, are you guys getting residents talking to you?
No, like, I have, nobody phoned me. No one phoned me, uh, there's been two or three emails, and that's it. So, so am I, so, to me, am I doing a bad job, are people scared to phone me, are they fed up with me, like, I, I don't know? And I, and, but I, I would like to think that I'm approachable enough, sometimes I can be miserable, but I, but how come people aren't phoning with, with problems, or, or their concerns? And that, that's, and I, I've, I've said that to lots of these councils, like, how come people aren't... and I've said that to lots of these councils, like, how come people aren't phoning me or texting me or emailing? And I guess that's why. I just, that's a question that, and I don't know who can answer it.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly can't answer the real relationships that all councils have with the constituents, but I'll say this. I think that we, at this turn of time, are living in a, unfortunately, it's a polarized world. After four years of amalgamation, in which a significant portion of people do not feel they have properly represented or fairly taxed. The result is now that some people feel disenfranchised, some people are going to more radical measures to try to restore the balance. That's under my assessment. That's certainly not the truth of that aspect of Walnisa.
All in mind on basis of the fire department, Mr. Kirby, that the fire department since 2016 has had 78 calls out where equipment and personnel were deployed. Of those, two were in the village of Walnisa. 76 were in the rural. We don't want anybody thinking subsidization. I think that's the worst word we've ever heard either in this municipality, as far as I'm concerned, because there's not subsidization. There is taxation done by assessed values. Assessed values go up. There's a report put out by the government on reassessment years, and it's all very self-explanatory to the most part. It is hard to maybe see, but when I look at this cell phone service, I know you have it. I know your wife have it. We will pay over $1,000 a year for family for communication to talk to one another. But we're really worried about $86.53 for a fire service that has saved lives and property. And people are, and we're not gonna save houses all the time, but they will save other things. And there's a lot of city fire departments that lose houses completely and move lots. If you look at Brandon, they lost a whole lot of buildings. Their job isn't just to say, oh, you don't, you know, don't put out a fire. You guys are no good. That's not the whole thing. It's property, people. And we're paying thousands for this, and we don't want to pay $86. That makes me angry when I see these words come out. And it's a matter that I'm, I'm one of those people that feels that lives are very important. And I know dollars are important. I don't like petty tax money either. I don't like having taxes. But we're gonna have them. And we have to make sure that our services are shared properly. And that's what this council is about. We're not here to pick and choose who we're gonna, you know, pin down this year. That's not the point. The point is, we've got these services. How can we best distribute the costs of it? And that's what we're all about. So, thank you for coming. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, one more comment to Councilors and Councilorages. That, you know, to do with the phone calls about budget, I've had some conversations, but you know where the majority of my communications been with rape pairs? Both, majority in rural, but some in the village, is the bashing of councils. There, some, it is really starting to bother a lot of people. There's a group that just chooses to bash people if, and they're, you know, that some are very concerned. And I just want to put that out there.
Mr. Chairman, in response to the fire service, I believe that in Manitoba that we are very fortunate in that the costs are not transferred to the property owner that's had the fire loss. Being with my experience in the insurance industry, the province of Saskatchewan has chosen that the property owner that suffers the loss pays the fire department charges. So you look at some of the people in the rural, they'll have on their insurance policy 10, 20, 30, 40, $50,000 worth of insurance that they're paying for, for a fire department service for something that they might not ever use, but the insurance is there to pay for that. So in the event, God forbid, that they have a fire, they get an assessment from their municipality for that fire department to respond, and it's up to them to pay it. So they could have a bill coming back from the municipality for $30,000 or $40,000 that's on a pay-per-user fee. And in where we are right now, I think that it's a more fair distribution so that we're all sharing in that service and that responsibility to help lessen the burden on the person who actually suffers the loss, whether that's fair, indifferent, or incorrect. That's what we've had in Manitoba versus comparisons to other provinces. And then in response to the handy van transit, in previous years, Walnisa paid the $7,000. And South Cypress and Glemberg each paid $7,000 each. The handy transit had not done their books to do the re-amalgamation, sorry, the assessment based on amalgamation with Walnisa and Oakland. So the other $7,000 was never charged to the Oakland municipality. It was only ever the one. So Glemberg, South Cypress has been paying the $14,000 for many years. Walnisa was paying the whole time the $7,000, and it wasn't until this year that the additional $7,000 was being assessed against the municipality as a whole for the Oakland sector. So yes, I realize it's an increase that's come across this year that it looks like we're paying an exorbitant fee. But it is something that we haven't contributed as South Cypress, Glemberg has in their assessment in how the handy transit assess their budget. So, and again, I want to thank you for coming today. It's very nice to see that you're here at the table and representing the people that you are representing.
That comes from the very difficult board.
Yeah, you made a comment a few minutes ago that, you know, your numbers are, it doesn't mean that your numbers are wrong. I think you said something to that, right? And absolutely, I completely agree with that statement. And it doesn't mean that our numbers are wrong. No. It means that we have to disagree, right? And we have to sit down and have a discussion. And so I really appreciate that you're here and having a discussion. And I recognize that, you know, we talked to you about some stuff that wasn't your deal, the petition deal, but again, that was our forum to talk about it. But I really appreciate that you're here having a discussion because that's what needs to happen. It doesn't make you a bad person if that's what you believe is fair. It doesn't make me a bad person that this will, I believe is fair. And we need to stop the villainization of people. So I thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just close with this, because I think the council, the other areas of the council. I think it's incumbent on council moving ahead. If council believes that what it's doing is fair, I think council has to get up there and make sure that people all across the municipality come to understand that it is fair. It was right now. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Okay. So be it resolved that the presentation by Glenn Kirby with respect to the 2019 tax levy bylaw be received. I'm sorry, please move that. Councilor McGregor, second there. Counselor Soya, all in favor? So everybody got a copy of that communication from rural residents? So be it resolved that the communication from rural residents dated April 12, 2019, along with council's response dated April 25, 2019, be received. Counselor McGregor, please move that. Counselor McGregor, second. Counselor McGowan, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we talked a lot about numbers, but there's a few more that I wanted to put out. With the petition, one of the things that's requested is that the fire hydrant branch will be switched to just Walnisa. So again, I hit numbers, that same portion assessed, $117,000 representing a quarter section or $360,000 on home. An Oakland resident is paying $1.58 for its hydrants. Village resident is paying $14.03 for its repayments. So I think it's important that we understand that that is the reality of what's going on. If we took hydrants out of that large, how could we not take retainers out of that large? And then we would be increasing rural taxation even further. Recreation, Oakland resident pays $27.21 on a quarter section for recreation. Village resident pays $352.21 on the same assessed box. Walnisa's paying 13 times as much as a rural resident for recreation. Again, I think it's important that people understand that these are the numbers. So I just want to make sure that those ones are included.
Okay.
Um, I've talked to people about this. I understand their concerns. There's a few people on here that I talked to after they signed it. And after I've gone through what I feel is fair and the numbers, they said, I shouldn't have signed that. So, I mean, it's only a few, not everybody that's on here. It's valid, but I just think council has to do a better job. We have to do a better job of getting our numbers out and get our numbers out and get the reasons why we're making decisions the way we are. And I think people will realize that we're not all bad people sitting around this table.
I guess in addition to that, that's one reason for a public hearing on, that you have to have a public hearing. It's one of the reasons why it's in the municipal act. So people have an opportunity to come and get enlightened as to what it is. And I think over the last three years that I've been on council, as head of council, we've done presentations with Jody and before that, and Elaine, and Sheila before that. Very comprehensive, very detailed. And everybody leaves that saying it's fabulous. You know, it's great presentation. But that's all we hear. We just, they get nothing further out of it. I don't know what we could, we can't force them to come to the hall. We can't force them to come to the table. They have to be willing to do that. And I don't know how we're gonna do that. I agree. Counselor Hargreaves, we have to do maybe a little more somehow, but...
Well, I just, there's, you know, I had a couple, well, I guess they're neighbors or friends. I wouldn't say they contacted me just because of municipal affairs, but we talked about it. It was, yeah, we'd like to see some more information on, you know, like Brett's numbers he's worked out and stuff. And that's, I think that's the stuff we need to get out. And then people can make their own informed decision instead of hearing one side or our side or whatever.
Yeah, in response to that, I have had some discussions with a couple of residents in the rural and tried to explain our position and how we've arrived at the decisions that we've had, but they didn't want to listen. And not that they had, they disputed, they, you don't know what you're talking about. There was rebuttal. It wasn't that I was trying to change their minds or brainwash them or anything like that. They didn't want to hear any of the answers that I was giving them. So it was kind of a frustrating event.
There's been a lot of misinformation up there. And unfortunately, a lot of that stuff gets out there first, and it's hard to... I know there's one here that was in regard to lagoon. And the fact that that rural resident still believes they're paying for the lagoon. Well, they're not. There's nothing whatsoever but the lagoon on rural taxation. It's all a utility. But you go to that person today and ask them, say, what do you think of that? Why not, we're still paying for that? You know, and it's, it's hard to help people that don't want to help themselves. Our job is very difficult. I know that you guys, this new counselor just came on. It is a steep learning curve, and it's a learning curve for ourselves. So just think what it is for the people up there that don't have what we get as far as information and the seminars. So it's very, very difficult. And I feel bad that maybe some of these people don't understand, but we can't stand over there. We have to keep doing our job to make sure everything runs in the municipality. And I applaud you guys for what this council has been doing. Anything further? Want to call for all in favor?
Communication?
Communication. Okay, bylaw. Everybody got a copy of the bylaw?
Yeah, I should have.
Sorry, did we want to talk about postponing the, I know it's not on the agenda, sorry.
We have to have it with the agenda unless we want to...
Yeah, sorry, I, we don't have to.
Your worship, part of the response that had been provided, if you wanted to use the flexibility that the response touches on delaying the budget, what it might mean. Up until this point, at the last council meeting, Counselor Hargreaves, I had given council a heads-up as to the response that I had received from municipal services, which indicated that the May 15th and June 15th deadlines were in there regardless of whether there were vacancies or not. And so the question I had for council was, if you want to do anything to delay, we're gonna have to have a resolution to deal with that. If your decision is that you have contemplated the information, the concerns that have been raised during your budget deliberations, and you weren't taking any action, then there would be no motion required to take no action. So up till this point, there has been no motion put forward because at this time, I hadn't heard anything that would give an indication that council wanted to do anything other than move the bylaw forward.
Okay, no, I'm, yeah.
Okay, be it resolved that bylaw number 01-2019, being the 2019 tax levy bylaw, be read a second time. Counselor McGregor, second there. Counselor Hargreaves, discussion? All in favor? Be resolved that bylaw number 01-2019 be read a third and final time. Counselor, please move that. Counselor McGowan, second there. Counselor Hargreaves. Now, this is a recorded vote because it's the serving of a bylaw. All in favor? Okay, be it resolved that the meeting does now adjourn. Counselor, please move that. Counselor Hargreaves, second. Counselor Soya, all in favor?